...which I will do at this time. There is a quorum established, let the records reflect that Mr. Elmore is absent. At this time, if y'all would join me as we, I'll lead you in the invocation, then we will have the pledge of allegiance. Will everyone please stand? Now, having a follow, we do thank you for this day that you have given us. We know we can rejoice and be glad in it. Father, we just ask you to grant each of us wisdom as we discuss the different topics here in this meeting. May we make the decision that is pleasing to you? And Father, we thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow man. These things we asked in my name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to make a quick comment. I'm proud to salute that flag. Mr. Feller from San Francisco, the quarterback, don't want to? I wish he'd leave the country. Let me make a note of that. He's been, he's making headlines. He's ashamed of our flag and the way things is being done, so.
Well, thank you for those comments. I have same sentiments to say.
I do.
At this time, I'd like to welcome everyone here. We appreciate your interest in your county government. We, uh, I don't see any of the news media here today, but probably will come in later. So with that, uh, at this time, I will ask a motion to adopt the official agenda.
So moved.
I'll say.
I have a motion to sign to adopt the official agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. At this time, we will hear from Mr. John Carter concerning his, uh, the flood management plan on his proxy. Mr. Carter, if you'll step to the mic.
Thanks for the opportunity to come for the commission this morning. I think I've talked with one, most everyone in the room concerning this. Uh, and I have the minutes from the February twenty-sixth of two thousand eight where the, I think the, uh, the procedures were adopted. Uh, in Article Five, it raises a variance procedure. It's my understanding no one has ever asked for a variance before. I come before the commission seeking the variance on several reasons. Uh, the primary reasons is the health issue. Uh, my family has a long history of arthritis. Uh, my dad retired early from arthritis, uh, snake partor, my uncle, it just, it's not when, uh, if I have arthritis, it's when I get it. Therefore, I'd like to seek the variance, not to have to build up. It's my understanding that with my present structure, I can remodel. I do not have to build up. We have gone through this issue on several occasions. I have personal beliefs that the reason this is the floodway was because of human error, not an act of God. Definitely flooded, there's no doubt about it. But I think with the current procedures, the likelihood of flood is, is, is much less now than has been in times past. So I'll be glad to give more details. Uh, I had asked her if there was anything I needed to do in a formal way in writing. I was told there was not. Just appear before the commission and ask to seek the variance, uh, that I may actually tear down my property and rebuild a, a, a structure that's suitable that we will enjoy in retirement.
Nothing right now for you to present to us, actually, here what you got to say, and our lady counsel does the research of what we are responsible to do according to the law. Then she will be in contact with you to tell you what we found out, and then at that time, you would make, need to make a formal written request for that variance.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
John, did I understand you correctly that the, uh, the reason for the variance is initially for a health issue?
Well, yes, primarily, uh, again, it's not if I'm going to receive arthritis, again, arthritis is just when.
Okay.
Long history on both sides, and I've already had the, uh, the, uh, survey work done, and my structure would have to be up around eight and a half feet. So therefore, that necessitates quite a ramp, or either an elevator, or some extended stairs.
Okay.
My reason is not to circumvent the law.
Sure. You, um, my understanding is you're already grandfathered in, that your home was built way before this ordinance came into place?
Oh, yes. It was actually in the, in the seventies.
Okay. And what, has the, that home been there since you purchased the property in the seventies?
It was, it was family.
Okay. And, uh, the remodeling, uh, that you're intending, have we seen the plans to that?
I have done, 'cause I don't know what I can do yet.
Okay, so.
I have in my mind.
Okay.
But my plans, if I have to, if I have to build up, will be different than what I, I will build up no matter what. I just do not want to go to the elevations required.
Okay. Wha- what type of remodeling do you intend on doing? Do, will it change this?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna destroy it. I'm gonna knock it down.
You're gonna demolish that building?
Yeah, it's a woodfr- it's a woodfr- wood frame house built, the original structure was in the forties.
Okay, so you're essentially just gonna rebuild on the side?
Exactly. And I, if I remodel again, I'll be putting lipstick on a pig. I mean, is, is my issue still there?
Okay. In, uh, the remodeling, is that just for aesthetic purposes and, uh, because it's old, or, or is there?
Yeah, I don't really know. And my wife.
And my wife. That's a good reason. Okay. And when I had talked to you before, were, were you intending on building up, but not necessarily to what the flood plan marked?
Yes, uh, in, in my opinion, I, I would be foolish not to build up some. But, um, I don't know if you would like for me to express my reasons, but again, this is my personal opinion. When we flooded, uh, Point A Dam has seven gates. Gant has five. Point A was completely empty, and they emptied Gant into, into Point A. At that time, Point A Dam had a trolley system where you had one, basically on a rail, and they had one motor that went, that would move back and forth and drop a hook down and lift the gates, is how I remember it. And I remember, I was the first one down there after the flood. I took the Covington County Electric, Gary Reeves, uh, down there to turn off the electrics for everybody's cap on my boat. The gates were never opened. So therefore, I, the analogy of putting water in a bathtub, uh, I've got a bigger drain than I have an intake valve. So, so that's why I do not feel a personal need for flood insurance. And I have no desire to put a lien on the property also.
Is there any other, any other, um, you, I'm sure Mr. Cotton will be in touch with you about different things, uh, as we proceed with this. Does any of the commissioners have any comments they'd like to make?
I don't know. Mr. Rawls, Miss Harris, do you all have anything?
So, we'll be ta- uh, listening to the advice of our counsel and our county engineer and the EMA director, who's responsible for the flood. Am I correct?
Question, are we looking at days, weeks, months, years, uh?
No.
Well, you're talking to lawyers.
I would hope we can resolve it within thirty days.
Within three days.
Thirty days.
Thirty days at least. I mean, you ha- you have to be a little bit patient with this in that, uh, that this is something that's more of a, a first impression with the, the variance. And so, uh, we obviously want it to be procedurally sound, and we want to do what the law allows and, uh, and take everything into consideration. So, I, I can't, can't allow you to box me in in thirty days, but, but, but I will say that I'll use best efforts, we all will, to get to the bottom.
That will be our goal, okay?
Thank you for your kindness.
And, and also the federal government, in our region, will have to follow them, and they're including them right now with the flooding, the people that actually, we need information from. So, thirty days may be stretching because they're down there, so just, I just want you to know that.
It's always good to have a target date to shoot for.
Yeah.
Thank you again.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
You're welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting, but if you wish to leave, feel free to do so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Our next item is consider authorization for filing a suit. I'm going to let, uh, Ms. Sowell explain this situation.
Uh, we recently received, uh, contact from Angela Forbes of RDS concerning a suit authorization that needed to be approved. They just have a taxpayer that's ignoring their collection efforts, and they're asking for our approval of this action.
It's my understanding that the firm that's going to file the lawsuit, their compensation will be paid out of the taxes collected.
That's correct.
If none's collected, they don't get paid.
Covington County will not be billed for any legal fees. That's correct.
What's happened here?
Yeah, that's my understanding how that works. Um, I, I think that it's a la- last ditch effort that will cost the county anything.
Mr. Nor, they may be more familiar with the property, it's the Horn Hill store.
Mm-hmm.
Store.
I don't think it's open.
It's been closed.
It's been closed for some time, and, uh, I don't see any way they're gonna get any money out of it, I'll just be honest. I mean, I don't see.
It's changed.
The proprietors that had it, you know, I, I don't see how they could pay it, and I don't see their fund means of paying it, so, I don't see.
It's changed ownership. Just so, I, I read and I identified the property, so you would know exactly who we're, we're dealing with.
I saw that the other day, and I thought, there was no way, I, I don't see how they can do it.
If they wanna try, if we give them authorization, they can try. So do I have a motion that we grant authorization for the company to file suit?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
I have a motion to seconds to allow the suit to be, authorize the suit to be filed against this entity. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. Next item is approve travel for the sheriff's posse, uh, Mr. Whoever.
Uh, the sheriff's posse needed approval out of state travel to, uh, acquire some additional dogs for their search and rescue and apprehension program that Sheriff supports us with, and, uh, that was the purpose of the, of the trip. And I would have been for voting on that, that's all I remember.
Uh, it's my understanding, uh, we will be approving this in, it's already taken, but we.
Yes, it was a, it was a unexpected trip, but they were, the, uh, people had the dogs notified and said, hey, if y'all can come on now, we can do it. That's the only time we're gonna have to, to help y'all for the next sixty days or more, so, kinda had to rush it, rush and put it together, but, yeah, it'd be, uh, it's already happened. But we did, uh, talk with the sheriff and, uh, some of the commissioners prior to the trip, but, uh, but I think we were in Orange Beach at that time in our, uh, conference.
Do I have a motion with it that we retroactively approve the sheriff's posse travel, and whatever date that was, Karen, you can look that up.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Let the records reflect that Mr. Barton had stamed from voting on this motion. Next item is consider amendments to the workforce classification and pay plan. A lot of this is being driven by the new wage and hour law that went into effect. Uh, and, uh, working through it, uh, if we have copies here, we, we will need to do, if we do anything, we need to do two things. We need to make, uh, the recommended amendments to the classification pay plan, which is this form right here, which lists all the steps. Uh, Ms. Sowell has put the proposed, uh, changes in.
Yes, they're there, marked in red.
Yeah, marked in red. Do we have any questions? Do I have a motion that we approve the, uh, recommended changes to the classification pay plan?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second by Mr. Adams? Do we have any comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. Next item is, uh, amendments to the workforce classification and authorized strength, and that's that form right here, which lists every employee in the county. The, Mr. Rawls has expressed an interest in consolidating some classification and changing some classification to better fit his pattern of work for his workforce. You want to expand on that anything?
Uh, just, you know, we, we adopt, well, I guess we changed the, uh, um, mechanic positions. Uh, we've deleted an overall equipment operator, um, position that Jack Cox, one of our employees, held. Um, uh, the mechanics and motivators, we've kinda consolidated all those down, and made a few other minor changes.
And all of the changes you are approving on this, do I have a motion that we accept the recommended changes to the classification and authorized strength?
I made the motion that we accept these changes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Barton, second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. At this time, we would consider surplus of certain pieces of equipment. I'm going to ask Mr. Rawls to expand on this.
Um, with our, our fleet, um, again, we discussed, and we, we declared surplus on our, our Batcos at the last meeting. Um, and for us, in order to replace those, um, pieces, when we get ready, it's about four months delivery time. So when we pull the trigger, we got, it's gonna take about four months to get it. And what I would like to do is, on any other future surplus equipment, at least give it enough time, at least, maybe a month prior to the meeting, when we actually need to, to get rid of it. Um, it's, uh, you know, I think we're looking at, I think seven, eight weeks by, by one manufacturer, as far as Caterpillar, I think they're seven, eight weeks out on their motivators. But, uh, I would, I would like, 'cause we're having issues with our, um, our motivators, some of the transmissions, our motivators, and I'd like to go and declare surplus on at least three of those machines, uh, in order to get those on. Can we still have a little bit of warranty? Is that correct? No, they're, they're, they're in or out of warranty. They're out, they're out, but they're, they're, they're in good working condition. And before those were to go out, 'cause we're looking, we're looking at replacement costs on, on the others, uh, getting the, uh, transmissions repaired. And we're looking at ten, about forty thousand apiece for the three that are out right now. We've got, there's actually a fourth one that has issues, but it's actually gonna be covered under the manufacturer warranty, so we're good on that one.
So, so what's your answer, the surplus three road graders to give you time to solicit bids?
Yes.
And also to authorize us, you to solicit bids on, on road graders?
That's correct.
Well, I would make a motion that we let Mr. Rawls, that we surplus these motivators and let him select, and him and Gary get together and decide which three we need to let go at this time.
At the, at the proper time, we will, Ms. Sowell will need the numbers, serial numbers of those, so we can put it in the, in the minute. So as the motion is stated right now, that we surplus three motor graders with the identification numbers to be provided at a later date, and also at the same time authorize him to solicit bids on replacement equipment.
That's right.
I second.
Mr. Barton made the motion.
I'll second.
And Mr. Adams, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Now, being none, motion carried unanimously. Five and six was considered in that one motion. Uh, we're in, presently in the budget process. I'm going to let, uh, Ms. Sowell to bring you up to date in, in what, what we're looking at.
Uh, we have been working with the departments, getting everyone's, um, I guess wishlist in. Uh, we have a couple of departments we're waiting on now. Uh, once we get all those together, then we will definitely be ready to finalize, uh, what we're able to, to help these departments out with. Um, everything's coming together quickly, and I appreciate everyone's help going ahead and turning in the ones that I've received.
Uh, do you think the department would need a workshop to go over that budget?
I would think so, yes.
Okay. So, uh, whenever you get everybody's information, then maybe we can set up a date that's convenient to everybody and, uh, go, oh, go over it and then be, be ready. I don't foresee us being ready by the fourteenth of September, is that our regular meeting?
That's correct.
Mm-hmm.
Huh?
That's the next one.
I, I, because of some other commitments of people.
Okay.
But we'll shoot for that, but I just don't remind the commission, we may have to call a special meeting just to approve the budget before October the first. Otherwise, Mr. Rawls will not be able to operate.
Yes, yes.
And the public will be ill 'cause of the roads. So, with that, so any other comments about the, the budget? At this time, do we have any other items that needs to be discussed? I, I failed to get on the, uh, agenda. Uh, I would like to give the, uh, elected officials an opportunity to say anything, and they lined up like ducks on a power line, so y'all take y'all's spot shots then.
Well, I would like to give a copy of what the pay bill was changed to, 'cause I've already turned in my budget request, and I know that the pay bill that's been changed today, so that will affect what I requested in my budget that they already need changed, so I would just like to give that.
It's gonna be very miniscule, very little change with it, but.
And it's more, and our, as far as mine, it's all road, all mine was all the road department. I don't know what changes to hers.
There's a lot of very many options.
Effective date of these.
Only, the effective date of those, but, uh, uh, I, I need to amend that motion for an effective date of the nae, that the beginning of the next pay period.
You're talking about now on the, um.
Both of them.
On, on, over on the agenda, changes of workforce and play plan.
Right. I need an effective date that will be the next pay period, which is, Ms. Sowell, you know.
Andrew. Yes.
We.
I think we failed to include that, we discussed it.
Wait from the day.
Yeah.
Wait from you. Trying to get.
It is very, it's very critical for, for Mr. Rawls to have that done as soon as possible on his.
September eleventh.
Okay. Do I have a motion to amend that, a motion to, for September sixth to be the effective date?
So moved.
Mr. Barton?
Second.
You second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried. Uh, Mr. Meeks, do you have anything?
Uh. I do have something. We're working to have payments for property tax online in full scale. Go to our website, click on your, look, and give them to view your property tax, pay it straight online. And what I've been doing is working on the rate of the credit card company. We, we were contracted one time at three percent. I've been working real closely with Stacy. She has a company called Engenuity, and they provide supply of software for the probate office. I'm working with that company because it won't affect her, but it also helps me. And he's at two point five percent right now for the revenue commission, because those are bigger dollars instead than what goes to the probate. I'm trying to ask you to do two point five, or Stacy's as well, but he's kinda crawfishing a little bit on that. So, we'll know real soon what the rate is, and we don't have to get y'all to approve that, because I've gotta do some plug-in work on the website and that sort of thing. So I'll be coming to y'all definitely by Saturday.
Did I understand, you say the rate would be one point five or two point five?
Two point five.
And, and it's currently two seven five?
It's currently three percent. It won't cost the county anything.
Well, my suggestion is you work with Ms. Sowell to, to get the contract, and of course, as you know, only the commission can approve a contract.
Yes, sir. Just let me tell you one more thing, that, that it won't affect the county, it won't cost y'all anything, because this is a convenient fee for the actual taxpayer.
Right. Right. That seems to be the way everybody's buying everything online or paying online, so wait the future here.
Do we have, Ms. Harris, do you have anything? Mr. Donaldson, do you have, you might want to bring us up to date on the situation in the courthouse.
Okay, um. They, the electric people ran a, uh, put a, a meter box on our, uh, on one of the panels we had in the courthouse to, to try and, and isolate where we may be getting electrical issues, um, into the server room and probate office. Well, they didn't see anything on that box, but even during the time that they had the, the, uh, the, the monitoring equipment in there, we had issues during that week that they didn't even see on their box, but we actually lost a power supply machine that week. Uh, it was actually, I didn't even tell him about it, it was one of his, it was one of Chuck's machines, but I fixed it during the night and put another power supply that I had in my office in. But, uh, I'm being told now about electric people, uh, one of the things that we're gonna have to do prior to, even if we buy the equipment that, uh, that we were talking about before, is we're gonna have to rewire that room, because the, I, I originally thought that the patch panel in the back was what powered the servers, but it's not. There's a, there's a panel back there, but that's not what's actually powering it. The power to that room is actually down in the basement in the boiler room, down in the basement of the, of the courthouse. What will have to happen is there'll have to be a sub-panel put in that room that covers all of that equipment that, uh, we're running in there. Does that make sense to y'all?
Yeah.
And what will happen is the machine that we're going to purchase to put in there to regulate all of electricity and stop these issues, it will essentially power that panel, and the outside power will power that device.
And what, the UBS will be powered by the outside source. UBS then will power the inside panel.
Yes, sir.
Which then turns, powers all the equipment in there.
Equipment, and, and they've got a, uh, a deal in, I, I don't know how to explain it other than to say that there's a guarantee that your equipment won't blow up when you plug it into that. It's written out in a bunch of different ways, but, uh, if, uh, they guarantee it up to like a million dollars if, if your, uh, equipment blows up when it's plugged into that device. But, um, we gotta do something, we're gonna get to a point where we get to something that we can't recover from. We've, we've been able to recover in the past, and, but if, if we were to have, like, say, if the backup machine got hit at the same time that, we'll just say Ms. Stacy's domain controller got hit too, I, I, we couldn't power, that whole office would be down. And we wouldn't be able to do anything. They're both, and they're both right there together, so.
Okay. Let me make a comment. If, if we're going to do the power panel inside the room, I'd like to recommend that we contact a certified electrician to do that. And let Ms. Sowell, uh, contact a couple of people to get, get an estimate of what it is, and then if, if that's what y'all deem to do, we'll bring it back before the commission to approve a contract with an individual to do that work.
It may come into play with bid laws and stuff too, as far as service support, what we're looking at.
Right. I, I think it's, it's under capital improvements, and a lot of people, no, had to be fifty thousand or more to, for.
I would have to say, what?
But I'm sure, if it's fifty thousand, we may have to close the doors.
I don't think there'd be any way to do that, too.
I'm just being facetious.
Oh, okay.
But, but is that, the consensus is to let Ms. Sowell sort of, uh, get that spearhead, give them someone to do that. Okay.
I, you said they had a meter on it, and, and we still had issues on it, but it didn't show on the meter. That, that doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, it didn't.
I mean, I'm, I don't, I'm not real knowledgeable on this, but if we didn't have it hooked up to the right s- power source or something, evidently.
There, there could be an, an issue of, we may not have had it put to the right one, but we're not sure about that. Uh, Kevin and I actually were gonna find out if we had our own right breaker, but we're not positive on that. But even in saying that, um, we didn't see spike or dip or anything like that, but it doesn't, it didn't register free, radio frequency or electricity frequencies going through there, and that's what the, uh, actual devices inside those machines run on. You have a, a steady current coming in there, but then that current is broken off into frequencies, and if your frequency is higher coming in or lower coming in, uh, your device sits there and constantly looks for that frequency. If it doesn't find it, and it spends all of its time looking for it, the part that's looking for it burns up. Does that make sense to you?
Mm.
And, uh, I don't really know how to explain it. I've been educated a lot on electricity in the last couple of months, but I knew a little bit about it to begin with, but, um, I've learned a lot more about the frequency and stuff, and the actual hard drive inside a computer, it, um, it, it's powered by three, five, and twelve volts, but it's actually moved, and the motor spins at certain RPMs and stuff by the actual frequency of electricity, not the voltage of the electricity. Does that make sense? And that stuff can get out of whack, and I'm as, we're assuming that's what is causing these issues, and that's what other people that have had these issues are telling me is happening in their places, where they'll see where, where there wasn't any issues on the, uh, the actual electricity coming in, they couldn't find anything, but, uh, then they put an oscilloscope on there and saw the frequencies just out of the range. And that was causing their issues, is the frequency they put a device on there to stop and condition all the stuff, everything started working fine.
And all, all the frequency stuff is new to me. I'm learning about that from John, but the power, there are no power issues there with spikes. And that's what we were looking for. And the only thing that they could determine was if there were spikes or drops in the voltage coming in. It's really the only thing they were checking for, cause that's typically what causes problems. If you have a, an air conditioner or a, or if you have several air conditioners go out or some, some big electronic equipment or electrical equipment, if it goes out, then you have, you may have spikes or dips in the voltage, but from what, from talking to John, the way I'm understanding it.
This is one step farther.
It's a step farther and it looks like, listening to him and all the research he's done, there's nothing wrong with the courthouse with electricity. Um, it's, it's simply what he tried to explain to you about the frequency of it. And, and in my simple mind, you would think the people that build the machine built a power supply that would transform a hundred and fifteen or a hundred and twenty volts into whatever that computer needed. And theoretically, that's true.
It does.
But for some reason, those power supplies, like he tried to explain about the frequency, it's not enough, it's not enough to, to.
Well, it isn't, and in some instances, it is enough, but there's devices in those power supplies that, that their whole life, the whole thing they're intended to do is look for those frequencies. They sit at that frequency, they open this channel, they fire this device up. They sit there and they, they do nothing but look for like, for that frequency and they get the wrong frequency through there, the device on the other end burns up. It's not spinning the way it's supposed to, or it's not being moved the way it's supposed to.
So, the solution, we got, there's not a voltage drop, but we got frequency.
That we know of, there's one.
And the frequency is to put in the power, power panel in the room and then put the UBS behind it that controls all of that. That is the solution.
Well, we can't monitor the frequency.
There's the old, there is a way of, there, you can monitor that stuff with an oscilloscope. Uh, uh, I put an oscilloscope, uh, program on there, which is, it uses the same type of stuff and it, it uses a power supply as, as an actual oscilloscope. And when I did that, I mean, the, the frequencies were just off the chain. They were everywhere. They were up, they were higher than they should be, they were lower than they should be. And then for like, uh, twelve hours straight, they were just dead flat, dead flat, and then they were all over the place again.
I, I think we have enough information now that to move forward. I mean, you got to take, make a step and one is to do the thing on, in the, uh, room.
That, that, I'm being told by some people and, uh, and like again, I'm talking with other people that have faced this issue before. And they've told me that there's a good chance that just rewiring that room may fix our issue, that putting the sub-panel in that room could fix the issue. But you're not sure, you know.
But that would be the first step, right?
That's the first step, yes, sir.
Well, I talked with some people, Power South was in the computer department and all that, and they said they had some stuff they could monitor and they would be glad.
They brought it out?
Did they bring it?
Yeah.
That's who came out.
Oh, they, okay, I didn't say, they said they need to request from Anelusa Utility.
Yeah, I, I.
Took care of all that. And I called Anelusa, they called them, and that's where all their things.
I know I talked with them, they said, oh, they need a request, right.
They did.
Okay.
I wanna satisfy everybody. I wanna satisfy Mr. Joe. I want him to be a hundred percent okay with this. I.
Well, no, I just don't know much about it. That's just a question, you know? I mean, if we put, if we spend all this money and it don't fix it, we just look back where we started. I don't.
Yeah, but I can only give you the advice that, that I, I know you can.
Well, I don't know anything about it, I don't, I don't know yet.
And I can only tell you what other people in the industry that have faced this issue, that I've corresponded with and talked with and, and actually built some relationships with and gone over and seen their stuff, how they have dealt with the issue. And they've gotten it resolved with the device that I'm asking y'all, or was asking y'all to buy. But, you know, the first step, if the room has to have the sub-panel done first anyway, that could possibly do it without us having to buy the device. I mean, we could do the sub-panel, run it for a while and see if we lose anything.
I mean, I'm fine with it. I'm, I'm willing to go in steps and see what the first step does and before we get to the second step.
Okay.
Are, are there any other comments from any of the commissioners? Any comments from the staff? Do I have a motion that we adjourn?
I make a motion we adjourn.
All in favor, stand.
That you want?
We often adjourn, we often call attention to something, because you, you of all people, had so many special meetings while I was here and made it real clear, we can only discuss specifically what is on the agenda, number eight. I just, just pay attention to them.
What do you mean?
We're promised, told me there, so, yeah, that's right. She told him.
This was a staff report, uh, based on a request from the previous, uh, previous.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't put other items on special meetings then, other, other out rounds.
You're a man.